In attendance as well. And with that said, can we all rise and honor America by saluting our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Ms. Dougherty. Ms. Fattacante. Mr. Leahy. Mr. Leary. Ms. Martin. Mia Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Seven present.
It is with great honor and distinction that we are going to put the spotlight on two different groups, two different organizations. And the first is the mayor and the school committee, the administration, and the entire city of Lowell would like to congratulate the Lowell team, the trial team, that went to Washington DC and walked away with the national honor. And this team deserves a round of applause from Lowell High School, Lowell County. And I might say that these great students probably would have tried their best, but probably without some great tutoring or some great coaches, probably wouldn't have won that trophy. And I'd like to recognize three people who have worked tirelessly for years on this project. And these students would certainly recognize the fact they deserve a round of applause, and that is Lowell attorneys Frank Talte and Patricia Sullivan Talte and Eric Schutzbank. Put your hands together for those emotions. The Lowell team was composed of Alex Nugarello, Ashley Lemire, Carolyn Loisel, Corey Lania, Courtney Vinyl, Megan Bazzola, Michael Fugate, Monica Bun, Retika Kuma, Sarah Condonan, Suti Komosiko, and Victoria Gregory. And I have a citation for each and every one of you, and I'll read one citation, they all read the same, and this citation reads, "The city of Lowell, official citation of personal achievement, be it hereby known to all, that the city of Lowell, Massachusetts, hereby congratulates and honors Monica Bun upon achieving first place in the annual Learning for Life National Mock Trial Tournament bestowed by the Greater Lowell Law of Explorers. Monica, who primarily through her own self-determination, has achieved personal and professional success in winning the first national title with her team members from Lowell High School and Lowell Catholic High School. The Lowell team is coached by Lowell attorneys Frank Talte, Patricia Sullivan Talte, and Eric Schutzbank. The entire city of Lowell commends Monica for her hard work and wishes her all the best and continued success given the 16th day of September in the year 2009 by Mia Caulfield, the entire school committee, the administration of Lowell Public Schools, and the 104,000 people who reside in this fair city." Every citation reads the same, and I'm going to bring these citations down to Mr. Talte, and I know he has a few things to say. So congratulations once again.
I think you'd actually rather hear from the students, so I just want to say there are a couple of students here tonight that aren't with us because they're in college now, they were not this summer, they are now. We have one student who actually fell ill the last couple of days, but other than that, this is the team. It's a team that's combined from Lowell High School and Lowell Catholic. During the school year, each of the schools has their own team that competes in the Massachusetts High School Tournament. In the summertime, we merge the two teams and compete in this national invitational. Over the last 20 years, teams from Lowell have competed. And after 20 years, as my wife said, we finally did it after 20 years. But these are the guys that really did it. So I want to ask, actually, if the mayor, actually, if it would be all right if one or two of the students said hello. So I'm going to ask one student from Lowell Catholic, Alex Nugarello, and one student from Lowell High School, Suti Komsonkio, to come up and say.
Most definitely. Come right to the podium and take all the time you need.
Good evening. On behalf of the whole National Lowell Team, we want to thank the Lowell City Council for giving us the citations. We feel so honored that the Lowell City Council has recognized our hard work that we put into this competition. We just wanted to thank you from the bottom of all our hearts.
Going down to Washington DC for the first time was a first time for most of us. It was a great honor for us to go down. We'd like to thank the school committee, the mayor himself, for providing us with the citations, and also the plaque that we got. We were very happy to get this, we were very happy to be able to present this to our coaches, Mr. Talte, Mrs. Talte, and our Schutzbank, for the first time in 20 years for them. They've been down the 20 years, all their hard work finally paid off with us, and we're very happy for them. I'd like to say thank you once again to all of you, it was a great honor. Thank you.
And I do know that these students will make fine attorneys, great citizens, and move the community forward in a very, very positive way. Congratulations, God bless, and keep up the great work. And thank you Frank Talte, Patricia Sullivan Talte, and Eric Schutzbank for your tutoring and your hard, hard work with these students. Thank you so much. Moving on with the agenda, the spotlight excellence. There is a lot to learn about Lowell. And what a beautiful quilt that's before us this evening. A collaborative quilt-making project with the Family Literacy Center, Even Start Summer Program, and the New England Quilt Museum. Let's bring forward those people representing, I have to hear someplace in front of me. Thank you, thank you. Pat Murphy, Paint Chart, Early Childhood District Support Staff and Program Coordinator for the Even Start Family Literacy Program will present a brief overview of the evolution of the three-year partnership with the New England Quilt Museum and the history of the quilt-making project. Pat Murphy, Paint Chart will introduce Rhonda Galpern, Outreach Program Manager for the New England Quilt Museum, who will summarize the planning and implementation process of the quilt project while providing a visual display of the quilt. Please come forward. Fatima D'Souza, Moody School Teacher and Even Start Summer School Teacher will provide a supportive narrative regarding the children's learning and literacy connections while engaged in the project. Welcome, thanks for being here, and thank you for doing a great job for the students of Lowell.
Great, you're welcome. Thank you very much for the invitation this evening, we appreciate it, for the school committee and school department and the mayor, we appreciate the honor. I will start, I will be brief, as you said in the narrative there. I wanted to be here tonight to introduce some of my team members here from the quilt project, and to just give a little overview of the collaboration that has occurred between the Family Literacy Center Even Start Program and the New England Quilt Museum. So I do want to introduce Fatima D'Souza, she's the Moody School Teacher during the school year, and she's been our summer school teacher for our Even Start School Age Program for the past four, four years. And Rhonda Galpern from the New England Quilt Museum has done a great job in outreach into our program. We've had a collaboration with the Quilt Museum over the past three summers, and each year the project has gotten larger and more intensive, and you can see the great results of our quilt from this past summer's project. It is entitled, There's a Lot to Learn About Lowell, and we learned a lot about Lowell ourselves this summer in that project. And it was a mixed group of students, school age students that were ages six to 12, that worked on this project and did a lot of curriculum work to support the actual connections and pieces of the quilt. I want to recognize the Lowell Cultural Council for the grant that provided the provision for us to do this project with both materials and time and labor of volunteers from the Quilt Museum themselves. So I do want to recognize that it was a grant-funded project with also a lot of volunteer hours and materials that supported the project. So I do want to thank both Rhonda and Fatima for their great work each summer in working with our students to complete this project. Fatima's going to speak a little bit about the actual literacy and curriculum connections that she worked on over the summer with the students, so thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm a second language person too, so I had the opportunity to share the need to learn more about Lowell with these amazing students we had over the summer. And there is indeed a lot to learn about Lowell, and also a lot to learn about our own and our heritage and what we brought to Lowell, and how we grew up together as a huge, strong, diverse, and rich community. So throughout the process, we read many books. We went on many field trips to the museums, to the library, and the surroundings, and we interviewed people. We talked to those who had been here for a long time prior to us, and we talked to families who had immigrated to this country a few years ago to see what their expectations were. And now, I'm pleased to show you some of the books that our children just love reading, and I'm sure you will love reading too if you had a chance. The first one, If You Lived 100 Years Ago, an amazing book. The second one, Sweet Clara and the Freedom Quilt. And the third one, Lowell Wonders, fantastic book, and very worth to be read and used in the school system. Well, I loved it, what can I say? And the quilt is actually the materialization of all our work. Each neighborhood means more than the physical space where our children live. It means their hopes, their expectations, and their dreams for a free life and a nice future in America. So what you see here is just a little bit of what they bring in their hearts and their minds. So when you look at this quilt, you see more than just stitches and fabric together. It's a life that's getting much better because they are living in a free country, in a place where they can grow and be the best they can possibly be. So thank you very much for the opportunity for being here, and thank you for the opportunity of learning together with our children.
Thank you.
At this time as well, I'd like Rhonda Galpern to have an opportunity to speak from the New England Quilt Museum. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity to come before you. The New England Quilt Museum has been partnering with the Lowell school system since the 2003, 2004 school years. And every year, we have arranged through the Lowell Cultural Council or through some other funders to do partnerships either during the school year or during the summer sessions. This year, we arranged to do this project, There's a Lot to Learn About Lowell, as a partnership with the Literacy Center. We encourage them to use as a basis of the project a book entitled Sweet Clara and the Freedom Quilt. In that particular book, a young slave girl learns by interviewing the slaves that have the opportunity to leave the plantation about the landscape and the surroundings, and she makes a quilt to show her fellow slaves, if they run away, how to get to freedom. In the reverse, our quilt was made to welcome new families to Lowell. So if you look carefully at the quilt, in the middle section, there is a map of the world that indicates families come from all over the world to come to the city of Lowell. Then there is the state of Massachusetts and the map of Lowell, which actually came from the map on the school department's website. Ironically, people thought it was a wonky map of the United States, but we told them and we showed them that it is the map of Lowell right from the school department's website. The children talk to us, and one of the things that I like to explain to them and explain to other teachers is that my generation grew up with the three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic. But today, the children grow up, from my perspective, with the three Is, information, inspiration, and imagination. And these children received from their students and their field trips the information and inspiration to develop this quilt project. These blocks that the children design that surround the map are their imagination of what their neighborhood looks like, so that the quilt all comes together. At the bottom of the center piano are five open books, and we asked the children over the course of the weeks, what did they learn about Lowell, or what were their favorite things? And I'm going to read you their top 10 things about Lowell. Lowell is a melting pot of nationalities and cultures. People come from all over the world to live, study, and work. Lowell celebrates our different cultures with festivals featuring our foods, music, dance, and costumes. Our families, friends, and neighbors celebrate our different heritages. There are two rivers in Lowell, the Merrimack and the Concord. There are six bridges crossing the Merrimack River. Lowell has trolleys, trains, and buses. Lowell is a national historical park and has nine museums. Our cultures are cool. Everyone plays sports, baseball, basketball, football, hockey, or soccer. We have teams at school, and we play in our neighborhoods. These are the things that these children have learned about the city of Lowell. They feel welcome here, and their families feel welcome here. And I have to say that the grand finale of the project was, we had what we call our Wow! event. And the families came and they shared with us their traditional foods, and the children came in the clothing that was native to the countries. They are very proud of their heritage, but they are very proud to be new citizens of Lowell. Thank you very much.
And I must say that the mayor, the school committee, the administration are proud of you for your hard work. And once again, that quilt will hang in the Rogers School, and it'll be there for all citizens and students to see. And I'd like once again to thank Pat Murphy, Paint Chart, Rhonda Galpern, and Fatima D'Souza for your dedication, your hard work, and inspiration to these students over the past summer. God bless you.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Before our mock trial students leave, if you look, they are a microcosm of the city of Lowell, so I see lots of parents who have cameras here tonight, so maybe if you would indulge some parents and we can take a picture of our mock trial team in front of the quilt.
And are there any parents who'd like to come to the podium and congratulate their son or daughter, or have a few words to say? Feel free to do so.
So why don't you guys?
If not, if you'd like to have a picture taken, glad to do it.
And your honor?
Yes.
Hurry up.
Who's he from? Where is he from?
Coaches, you better get work, Mike. Tom Bonino, great mayor boss, he always says, you have to say pizza, right? The future of the county right here.
Well, we just have a brief moment. People will ask, why do you get involved and why are you in government and so forth? What we just witnessed here tonight, that's the reason and the joy of being involved. Those youngsters, those students went to Washington DC, and they walked out as champs, and they beat an awful lot of great, great students, and they're going to make some great attorneys someday, so thanks so much. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting. So moved by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The minutes have been accepted and placed on file. Permission to enter, Madam Superintendent.
Hey, Your Honor. Permission to enter for September 16th. Hugh Van Joyce paying for the amount of $7,200 to provide music instruction in viola, violin, and cello to students at Lowell High School, funding provided by the Lowell Sun Community Fund and Youth Opportunities Upheld Inc. for the amount of $34,133 to provide for the other district tuition costs of one student enrolled and receiving services as outlined in their special education IEP. Funding provided by the Special Education Department Budget Special Education Tuition Account.
Any questions on these requests? I just want to say one thing on the music teacher that's going to provide instructions to the viola and violin and cello.
Yes.
I witnessed these students at Lowell High School with the violins, the cellos, and it made the hair on my arm come right up. We had them at the Mayor's Harvest Ball, absolutely phenomenal, and I'm a strong supporter of the arts, and this is certainly strengthening the arts in Lowell High School. Any questions? If there's none, roll call.
Move of approval.
Oh, move of approval by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Leahy? Roll call.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Caulfield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Memorials by Regina M. Fattacante, George Innocent, father of John Innocent, George Innocent, senior custodian at the Rogers School, and by the committee as a whole, Colm Sullivan, 2008 Lowell High School graduate. Let us rise with a dock in chambers for a moment of silence. Thank you, may they rest in peace. Any unfinished business? None? Public participation? None? Motions? Motion by John Leahy, requesting the committee block off all Wednesdays for school committee business, whether it be a regularly scheduled school committee meeting or a subcommittee meeting. Do I have a second? By Mr. Conway, on the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to put this up for discussion. I just thought scheduling-wise, it might be easier for the committee to, instead of trying to find that Tuesday or that Thursday, to do our subcommittee meetings. I just thought it'd be an idea to throw up for discussion. We could talk about it here on the floor, we could send it to committee of whatever. But I just thought it might be an idea just to make scheduling easier for the school department, if we knew that, hey, every Wednesday night, we're just going to be here or at the office building taking care of business, and that way it kind of frees up the rest of the week. But it does need to be a discussion because it may not work for all of us, so.
So it's a request, and the body would have to more or less agree to that request?
Yeah.
Further discussion will come forward. Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it's a great idea, I don't have a problem with it, except that the second Wednesday of every month, I have a Mass Association of School Committees Board Meeting, so I wouldn't be able to free up every Wednesday. That would be my concern, that then there'd be meetings scheduled I wouldn't be able to attend, so.
Mr. Leary?
I think it's an interesting motion from the standpoint of helping with people's schedules, and I think a lot of us, you know, challenging employment. My employment, you know, I travel every other week almost, so sometimes I can make every other Wednesday, sometimes I can't. I do like the thought process of booking out meetings like we did tonight with Ms. Fattacante's subcommittee we just had prior to the meeting, where we try to back up an hour or so prior to the meeting. I think more discussion is entailed. I think the goal of trying to have Wednesdays blocked off is a good thing. I think also too, before our regular meetings, trying to get them on TV, our subcommittee meetings is also a good idea. I know me and Mr. Leahy had a discussion regarding having that come forward, whether you have a, like, the subcommittee meeting that Ms. Fattacante and myself, Ms. Martin and Ms. Dougherty attended, where you actually have that before the cameras, we can do that right before this regular meeting. Often though, because of a lot of our work schedules and a lot of the demands, blocking off every other Wednesday at this point may not be realistic. However, I think discussing it further is a good idea, and hearing other people's thoughts on it is a positive thing. Thank you.
So the committee will further discuss this, maybe Wednesday nights wouldn't be a problem, or maybe a Monday night, or maybe a Thursday night. But I think what you're saying, John, is keep one night blocked off, so you're going to have subcommittee.
Right, so just trying to, so I guess to finish the motion, should we send it to a committee to? So I'd make, add to the motion, to add it, to send it to the personnel subcommittee?
Amend the motion.
I will amend Mr. Leahy's motion, to send that to the personnel subcommittee. Mr. Leahy?
All in favor, the motion is amended. Who seconded that motion?
Mr. Leahy.
Mr. Leahy.
All in favor, the motion is amended. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The motion is amended, and John will refer it to the personnel subcommittee for further Motion by Jackie Dougherty, request the superintendent to provide a report on the use of the early release time at Lowell High School, including specific activities, objectives, and measurable results from last year as well as plans for the upcoming year, seconded by, who had a second, by Mr. Leahy, on the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. As my colleagues know, I believe it was at our last meeting, we were discussing looking at early release time for the K-8 program, and at that time, I expressed some interest in looking at how we're using that time at the high school, because I think they've had three years of some early release time, and so this motion speaks to that issue, to kind of get a report, to touch base with the high school, how they've been using that time, how they felt it's helped in terms of instruction and professional development for their staff, and how we might learn from that experience before we move forward with a K-8 model. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's extremely important that we get as much information as possible so that we can certainly do our planning. The only concern I have, and I think this is a good motion, the only concern I have, I think, for the future, is the fact that in the last few months, we have sat here and we have cut a number of positions, and needless to say, our budget has decreased by, in the vicinity of $8 million. We have asked our staff to step up to the plate and to do more with less. And it's what we would call the reality of life, and it's the reality of the budget. And I think what we have to be very careful with is when we come up with a request for information, that this information, number one, is going to be used, and I think, number two, that the information can be gathered rather quickly. Because, again, all this extra time, whether it's by principals or assistant principals, housemasters, guidance counselors, teachers, secretaries, and so forth, they're all doing extra work right now, and for them to, should we say, stop what they're doing and to come up with information. You know, when I take a look at this motion here, this is very inclusive, this is a complicated motion. This is going to take a lot of work. And I did some calculation on this, and we're talking about, and I did make a couple of telephone calls for informational purposes only, of course, and we're talking somewhere around 50 to 60 to 70 man-hours to come up with this report. And I'm sure it's going to be done, there's no doubt about that, but I'm just concerned that... that that 50 or 60 or 70 hours is gonna be taken away from the job of educating our children. So I think we just have to be, I think we have to be aware of that. Taking a look at this request here, because we're gonna, the high school will have to bring together department heads, instructional specialists, the director of curriculum, and there'll be a lot of planning on what is to take place next year, and also a report of what has taken place in the past year. And I'm wondering whether it, just for time's sake, whether we could have brought, let's say, the director of curriculum forward, and perhaps in a 10-minute or 15-minute report in front of us, could give us all this information, or enough of information that we would need to go forward. So again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this, this motion, but I think that we have to be careful of bogging down our staff with a tremendous amount of reports that is going to take away from the important job, and that's educating our students. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're gonna refer the motion to the superintendent naturally, and the superintendent will come back with a report, and the staff will do the best that they can to fulfill the obligation to the motion, but I do agree that we have cut so many personnel that we're running on some thin air right now. Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, just to kind of respond to that concern. I did have a conversation with the superintendent before I put the motion on the floor, and although I wasn't thinking so much about an extensive amount of man-hours, as much as this is work that's already being done, I would assume, because we are letting our teachers out early at the high school on Wednesdays to do professional development, and it has been going on for several years. So this is more of a kind of checkpoint for us as a committee, which I think it's very important that we do periodically, but also when we're looking at, you know, doing a similar kind of professional development program with our K-8 program, to kind of touch base with how's this worked at the high school. If there have teachers getting out early one Wednesday a month to do professional development, I would expect that they're doing some planning before that, in terms of what happens with those teachers. And so I didn't think of it as, you know, starting from scratch, and in my discussion with the superintendent, we saw that it would be valuable for the committee to get more information about how that's working at the high school, so that when we go forward with making a difficult decision at the elementary and middle schools, where there is a sacrifice in time on instruction, because students are leaving school early, so that teachers can get together and do very important collaboration. So I hear that my concerns and my colleague, but I think that in this case, it would be something that would come before the high school subcommittee, or, you know, the whole committee if they wish. It doesn't have to be a 40-page document, as much as a discussion with some specifics about what they have been doing and how they're planning to use that time in the future. Thank you.
I don't want to belabor the issue, but every time something comes before us pertaining to the high school, I think last year, the high school was awarded prestigious plaque of congratulations, being the 25th-best high school out of 500 in the state, and that's what we should be dwelling on, the success of the high school, rather than trying to find the negatives of the high school, so. But the motion will be referred to the superintendent, and it will come back for a report. All in favor of the motion? Yes, John?
Thank you. I just had a suggestion through you, maybe, to the maker of the motion. Would you be looking for, like, saying, just an agenda of, I don't know, if, do you have an agenda, like, once a month when you meet? Do they just hand out a, what the topic of the day is and discussion? I mean, would that be helpful, or is that not what you're exactly looking at?
I just want to clarify, this is not looking for any negatives. This is looking for a model, looking for how the model of early release is working at the high school. I don't think agenda would really be enough.
Okay. I just thought maybe that was.
But I'm also not looking for, you know, a tool. I think that just to have a discussion about how they've used the time in a way that demonstrates for us that it's worthwhile to continue that program, because it is a big commitment to let our children out of school early, when what they need is more time on instruction, not less.
I just thought like an agenda might give us a, just a general view of what they're doing, so, okay.
Ms. Fattacanti?
No, I'd just like to add, I mean, I think, you know, certainly having an agenda would be helpful to help us understand kind of the scope of these things, but much like we rely on accountability measures for our students, we look for facts when we're making decisions, and I don't think it's untoward for us to ask for facts. I'm sure that we all recognize that we can't do our jobs if we don't have the information necessary, so I think that if, and I would absolutely agree that, this is a program that's been in place for several years now, we've been told anecdotally during that time how profoundly important it has been, how it has changed the status of professional development at the high school, how it has been the sole reason why our consistent testing measures have been put in place, that it has been the singular thing that has really changed our assessments at the high school. It's really been touted as having a huge, a huge impact, perhaps maybe even, dare I say, contributing to that top 25 status, and I would think for that to be the case, the high school has backup measures. The high school is measuring this somehow in order for them to be able to give us this information. So I think that, you know, for us to have it in terms of making a decision, that, I can be quite honest, I have grave concerns about, in terms of implementing a half-day professional development days across the district, I, you know, I think I've said to my colleagues, and I think I've said here, I'm gonna need convincing, and I can't be convinced by anything but facts. So if the administration has chosen that going to a half-day, several half-days during the year to do their professional development is the best course of action, they're gonna need some facts to bear that out. So I think it's certainly a legitimate question, and I have no doubt that the high school will be able to rise to the occasion of justifying and giving us some real quantitative measures as to why they have been telling us that this has been such a great success over the years.
Mr. Conway, did you have another question? You wanna, if not, we'll move on.
No, just very quickly, I mean, I agree with my colleagues on this, I'm just, I'm just wondering whether it would make sense at a subcommittee meeting that we would bring, let's say, the director of curriculum that could clarify this, this particular report. And as Ms. Martin said, the program's been going on for a number of years, and obviously successful, so the only point that I was, that I was trying to make here is that, you know, yes, the information is there, but there's another, what you have to do is then compile that information and put it into a, into a form that is going to satisfy this body, and that isn't necessarily always that easy, and it's not always that, that quick in doing it. So that's, that's the only point I'm making here, because once again, we've cut millions of dollars, I've talked to people in the, on different levels in the staff, and they are, they are going at 110% right now, and they're really out straight, and now, of course, we're being faced perhaps with another, another cut coming up this year. So what I'm trying to do is figure away perhaps a streamline, the reports. That's, that's all, that's all I'm trying to do, not divert them, but just make things a little bit, a little bit easier. Thank you.
The, yes, Mr. Leary?
Yeah, I wasn't gonna weigh in on it, but I think it's important to know, I mean, all my colleagues here tonight said very important things, and Mr. Conway's a great point, that we, we want to make sure that information requests, and requests it is important and of high value, and I think Ms. Martin articulated a clear point that the committee is being asked to look at, you know, doing the same program for the elementary and middle school levels, and before we invest that amount of effort and time, excuse me, we want to make sure that it's of significant value at the high school. I like what Mr. Conway said in terms of bringing forward Dr. Jack, the director of curriculum, and I like the idea of Mr. Leahy about the agenda, I think it's a good start to this, but again, as Ms. Martin articulated, we need to make sure we are comfortable with how the high school's doing it before we start making decisions at the elementary and middle school level. So I think there's a common ground here that we can pull together, I'm sure, I know that Deputy Superintendent Franco's been nodding her head, like, we can do a lot of this stuff already in terms of agenda setting, getting the right people at the right table, so we can all have a good comfort level before we start making decisions going forward. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye, any opposed? The motion carries, and the superintendent will bring back a report to the committee. The third motion by Jackie Dougherty, request the superintendent provide a report updating the committee on the status of development of a new instrument for evaluating teachers, including copies of both the proposed and current evaluation instruments in the report, seconded by? Connie Martin, on the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. I just realized that, I don't know how familiar I am with the current instrument we're using for teacher evaluation. It seems like we've been in the process of developing a new instrument since I've been on the committee, maybe it hasn't been five years, and I just, I'm kind of looking to reacquaint myself with what we're currently using and get a status in terms of what we're thinking of moving to, which my understanding is it would be, you know, a better tool, but that what we've got has been working fine as well. So it's more just kind of an update on what I think is a, you know, very important piece of the work being done with our teaching staff. Thank you.
Connie, one?
Thank you very much. I bear out your memory, it is something that's been going on since, I think, since I came on. I think one of the key things is that it is the, we've been looking at the evaluation instrument, and it's been kind of a sidebar agreement on our last two or maybe even three contracts, and we haven't really been able to make any movement with it. I absolutely agree that, you know, the instrument as it stands is not, I don't find it to be terribly instructive, it is, it is not a very dynamic document, and it doesn't lend itself to real effective conversations between supervisors at any level and teachers, so I think it absolutely bears our attention. I would welcome the opportunity for something to jumpstart this, in all honesty, I don't know what we do next, I mean, if it's as part of our, our current negotiations as they stand, I don't know if we can introduce it now, or I don't know if it's something that needs to be kind of worked through, again, as a sidebar with the administration, but if nothing else, I think it's a great motion, I would love, I would do anything I could to help push this forward.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. School Committee member, Ms. Martin, I think it's important just to give you an update, that we did meet a couple times last year on a tool that the union and the administration that had been working on, that people were pretty pleased with, and I do know that a lot of progress was made. I would like just to ask Assistant Superintendent Mulligan just to flush out the next steps, because we have been in conversation about this recently, about moving forward with, hopefully, a tool coming forward this year to you.
Just to let the committee know, we have an upcoming meeting on October 26th, which was the first date that the union and the school department personnel that are involved with the revision of the evaluation instrument. I have to say that it has been a long process, but it's been a very instructive process as well, and it's been a really good collaborative effort between the union and the school department personnel. We have, we have some agreement on many points of a revised instrument, however, we're still working very diligently, and our meeting on October 26th is going to be our start for the new year, and I am hopeful that we are going to have a revised instrument this year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye, any opposed? The motion carries. The last motion of the evening by John Leahy, request, ask the superintendent to set up a meeting with the appropriate department or departments for discussion on the hiring of a school maintenance position, seconded by?
I'll second this, Your Honor.
Seconded by Regina Fattacanti, on the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. What I'd like to do with this motion is, this is something that's been bothering me for a few years, and I've asked, and I've tried to get cooperation on, on all sides, and it just seems like it never came to fruition, so what I'd like to do is, this is the time to do it. We've cut back so much on our custodial staff, we've cut back on the city staff, but we don't want our buildings to fall into disrepair. So what I'd like to do is sit down with the superintendent, city manager, head of the unions, school and city side, we need to come up with some sort of a plan, or a person, or a position, something, that the school department is allowed to take care of minor issues in our schools. When we have a door that's in need of paint, you know, to have that, or a wall in a bathroom to go six months, you know, or to have ceiling tiles not being able to be replaced for six, seven, eight months, I mean, these are little things, so I'm not talking about major construction, major project, we're just talking about minor upkeep in our buildings that show the staff, the children, that, you know, you need to respect the building, we need to upkeep it, one minor problem can turn into a major problem if it's neglected long enough. So I think with negotiations currently going on with our unions and maybe the city unions, this is a good opportunity to sit down, and if we don't have money to fund a position, at least we can create something, and maybe we can get the ball rolling, and, so that's what this is about, and that's what I'd like to get out in the open and get a discussion and see what we can do. I mean, I know everybody's trying, but we've tried to revamp this work order system, but things just don't seem to work. I mean, when we put in a request for a sign or to get something painted, there's just a backlog that really is unacceptable for the schools, so we'd like to see how we can sit down and how we can resolve this, and how we can get the system to work better. You know, we are in the schools every day, and if there's something in need of repair, it should be able to get fixed relatively fast, you know, so that's what this motion's about.
Okay. Ms. Fattacanti?
Thank you, Your Honor. Years ago, in our custodial contract, we in fact had a position, we had several positions. We had our own carpenter, we had our own painter, and I'm not exactly sure of how those positions went by the wayside, so I think the person who's really gonna be beneficial to this conversation is Assistant Superintendent Lang, because he, sorry to throw you under the bus like that, but, because he, and I have had this discussion in the past, and he knows the history surrounding it, so I'm not looking for a history lesson on it tonight, but I think that he is the person who's probably going to be the most helpful to us in trying to figure out when in fact did we lose these positions, because we used to have these light maintenance positions, Your Honor, we used to, you know, if a bookshelf fell, we had a carpenter on the school system payroll who, that could fix the bookshelf. So I think that's what Mr. Leahy's looking for, some very light maintenance, small repair work, just so that even the aesthetics of our school buildings are maintained. I'm in favor of having a person on our staff that does something like that. The issue is, however, we're tenants, and as a tenant, you don't get to fix all the stuff that you'd like to fix sometimes, and so that, so that's gonna be an issue that we need to discuss with the city union, but we did have that in our contract, so Mr. Leahy, maybe we can have a subcommittee, building, facilities?
Mm-hmm.
That Mr. Lang would be able to assist you in trying to figure out exactly the historical timeline of when we lost that and why, and try to figure out how, how in fact, Your Honor, we could get that back, in agreement with the city unions. I know we've had, had some preliminary discussions with them before, they weren't completely opposed, when they realized it was more aesthetic than it was construction, or heavy labor. So I think it's a great motion, I think it's, you know, we have spent a lot of money in our schools, and custodians take a lot of pride in their buildings, and it probably bugs them to no end when they see some graffiti and they, they realize that maybe I can't paint that, and maybe I can't do this, and it's probably very disheartening to, you know, go weeks without having something done. So I understand where, you know, where they're coming from, where they might want to, in fact, have a person that does this for them, so I think it's a good motion, I think this is a great place to start, and maybe we can't fund it this year, but maybe we can have somebody within our custodial ranks be assigned to a position like this, you know, somebody who has the skills. We don't necessarily have to hire somebody new, but maybe within our ranks, we have somebody who, who is the jack-of-all-trades, who can, who can do some of this stuff for us. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Mr. Mayor, just very briefly, that was, I was gonna make that suggestion that we do take this motion, which I think is a good motion, and put it into the facilities and buildings, and I think also what we need to do is and buildings. And I think also what we need to do is, I think we need to invite the union people that would be involved so that everything is, everything is upfront and that we're not violating any laws or rules or regulations. I think that's extremely important because we all have to, we all have to get along here. And I think that we have to, we have to make sure that, that we're all working together and that, because I know on the city side, obviously, they're, they get hit with, with cuts, as you well know, Mr. Mayor. And, and I wouldn't want someone, you know, all of a sudden doing one of their jobs of somebody that's been laid off. So I think we need to, everyone to be upfront and on the same page, working together. And that I think we could probably accomplish this goal that Mr. Leahy has, has put forward because I think it is, it is something that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
I just have a few questions to ask the maker of the motion. John, you indicated a jack of all trades. Explain that.
Yeah, well, Ms. Fattacante used those words, but yeah, if, if, we, we need to have a discussions, we could do it any way. The, the point is minor things need to be fixed before they turn into major. So if we had four cust, out of the, out of the group of custodians, if one said, hey, I, I know how to paint, and one said, hey, I know how to do a little cut, carpentry, and one said-
A little bit electrical, a little bit of plumbing?
Yeah. So we could, you could do it through overtime, we could do it through whatever. But, you know, it is, as Ms. Fattacante said, you know, when the kids write graffiti on the wall, you know, and it's not, hey, how are you, it's something else, then we can't paint over it. You know, it needs to be painted over.
So we have 20 schools. Am I correct by saying that?
Twenty-three, yeah.
Twenty-three?
Yeah.
And the school department wants to hire a person to more or less maintain all those schools?
Or discuss how we can accomplish the goal.
And you wouldn't want any more help from the city side of government?
No, we would. What we want to be able to do-
Now, that's where the problem comes in.
Oh, I know. Well, that's why we're going to have a discussion, but-
We have, you know, the city receives serious cuts, like the school department, serious cuts.
Right.
There's 11 people working in the street department. Eleven. The parks are not like they used to be. Severe layoffs there. We don't have any longer, a painter. And we had some severe cuts. And you have, you know, you have the union, the city union, you know, that's their work, John. And how can you bring another person-
Well, I know. And that's why I said we're going to have a discussion. But on the same token, I'm not going to sit back while my schools are falling apart either.
Who said they're falling apart?
Well, what I'm saying, Your Honor, is when I have someone writing squares on a wall, I want to paint it the next day. When I have, well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, if you have one person designated to do that, he's not going to get that done the next day either. Because he's got 19 other schools to address.
I know. I'm, well, all I'm saying is I want to have a frank discussion. I want to get things accomplished in our schools. I know we're a tenant. We can't always make, we can't always fix it, but we should be able to maintain our schools so they're, they're in shape. I mean, I could go on all day. When, when we have a plumber coming to the schools, that's fine. He comes in to fix problem number one. But when a principal says, hey, there's a leak over here, can you take a look at that? And we say, no, you know, make another work order, we'll be back in two weeks. I mean, that stuff's not acceptable. If, if the plumbers or the painters or carpenters, whoever it is, if someone's in the school to fix one problem and a principal says, hey, I got another little problem over here, can you take a look at it? The attitude shouldn't be, no, I'll be back in three weeks when you make a work order. We've got to cooperate and work together and say, hey, I can look at that.
As far as I'm concerned, that's all hearsay. And-
Well, okay, and that's fine, but what I'm saying is-
If you want to sit down and have a meeting with Keith D. Rudy, representing the city unions-
Right.
And Dave Blaisen and Manager Lynch, that's, that's-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We just all need to sit down and figure out a way-
But what I'm trying to tell you is you have unions who have specific tasks.
Right.
And they, and they cherish those tasks immensely, especially when a lot of their brothers and sisters went out the door.
Well, I know that. And I don't want to, that's why we need to sit down and figure out how the city Lowell is going to maintain itself. Because it's, you know, to be quite frank, it's not our job to raise funds here. It's the city councils. So we've got to work in cooperation-
And the school committee spends it.
Right. We've got to work in cooperation with everybody involved to say, how can we keep our buildings maintained well?
Mr. Leary?
And I think Mr. Leahy's point, and I think we've talked about this, and I think every committee member has talked about this a lot, it's really opening a dialogue. We've talked to the custodians in the schools and a lot of times they'll see a small piece of graffiti on, say, in a bathroom wall, and they just want to put a quick coat of paint over it. But because of union contracts, they have to go through a series of steps. And with our folks on the city side, with so few of them there, 11 in the DPW, which is devastating, they're not obviously going to have time to put that on the top priority with all the other significant stuff that they're doing. But if you're walking in as a, as a student in any particular school and you see a small piece of profanity on the wall, our custodians should, and I think in my, and anybody would agree with it, should be able to put a quick coat of paint over it to cover that up, which a lot of our folks do. And sometimes when they do, they get in some trouble and they don't want to get into trouble anymore. And it's not try to slight somebody for a job. I think the dialogue is probably the emphasis here that Mr. Leahy is pointing out. Sitting down, we can understand each other's dilemmas here. The work order thing that we put in place is fantastic. Granted, however, DPW with 11 folks for the city of 105,000 people is devastated. We get it. Our custodians are devastated. We let go 14 custodians. But some of our guys and our women see where they could be proactive in a moment's notice. Not plumbing, not electrical. So I think the dialogue thing is, is important and communication's always a good thing. Thanks.
Okay. I'll vote for the motion. If you want to sit down, have a meeting with the meetings of the mind and so forth, that's fine. But, you know, I know the unions very well, and they're going to fight, you know, for their, for their trip. And if, if the school committee wants to bring on a person and fund that person but comes under the jurisdiction of the city, you know, that's something else. But a painter is a painter, a plumber is a plumber, electrician is an electrician. And when I hear the jack of all trades, it won't fly. Because you need a license to be an electrician, a license to be a plumber. And once you start messing around with those two trades, you're in trouble, serious trouble. Mr. Conway?
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, I, I think this, I, I think the whole idea of having a dialogue is, is fine. I don't see anything wrong with that at all because who, who knows what can come out of it. And, and I think that, I think we all agree that we don't want to start stepping on other people's toes-
That's right.
-in, in unions. However, if it's a electrical situation or plumbing situation that can be delayed, I, I can understand why that's delayed. But to be quite frank with you, if there's graffiti, graffiti needs to be removed immediately, not a week down the road, immediately. You have children in those schools and they're going to be walking by that graffiti, that has to be removed. Whether our custodians do it or somebody else does it, it has to be, it has to be taken care of immediately. And that can be certainly addressed at, at that meeting. You know, that might be a priority. You know, there are other things that, you know, fixing a tile and a, and a, and a ceiling, maybe that can be delayed. But again, graffiti has to be removed right away. Thank you.
I'd like to put a friendly amendment to the motion. And the amendment would read, I would also request a report from the superintendent of schools, of those schools that have been neglected, that need attention. And I'd like that report for every school that's out there, and what plumbing needs to be done, electrical, graffiti removed, painting and so forth. I will personally bring that to the city manager. I would like that, that also part of the-
Do I have a second for the amendment?
Seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor of the motion as amended, signified by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Subcommittee reports. Ad Hoc Subcommittee on Building Naming reported the meeting of September 16, 2009 by Regina M. Fattacanti, Chair.
Your Honor, may I make a motion, please, sir, to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor of the suspension, signified by saying aye. Any opposed? The suspensions are annull.
Thank you, Your Honor. The issue for the suspension of the rules is to discuss a naming of a bench at the J.G. Pine Arts Magnet School. I'll read you the information, Your Honor. The staff and the students at the J.G. Pine Arts Magnet School requesting permission to place a memorial bench in garden at the main entrance of our school in memorance of Luis Espinoza. Luis passed away unexpectedly two weeks ago at the age of 16. Luis was a student at the Pine Arts for nine years until his graduation in 2006, at which time he went to the Lowell Vocational School. Luis was a very involved Pine Arts School student. He was a member of the boys' basketball team, Pine Arts Choir, Drama Club, newspaper, and was a volunteer scorekeeper for the volleyball team. Having the memorial will allow students and families past and present to not only remember Luis, but also to emphasize the sense of family and the model of caring school community philosophy of the J.G. Pine Arts Magnet School. While doing the pre-planning, they've been in contact with the Milford Granite Company, who has shown tremendous support in the possibility of purchasing an engraved granite bench. We also plan to contact Home Depot. They've, they've worked very closely with them in the past to help out with plants for the garden should we grant our approval. Your Honor, tonight, the members of the Subcommittee Building Naming met. Present were committee members James Leary and Connie Martin. Your Honor, a motion was made by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary, all voted in approval, that we would in fact grant the naming of this bench, the Luis Espinoza Bench at the J.G. Pine Arts Magnet School.
It's a wonderful gesture for the faculty from the J.G. Pine School. I understand they're going to fund this bench?
Yes, Your Honor. That's correct.
And there's absolutely no cost to the taxpayer or the school department, and it's a wonderful gesture on their part. And I can't think of a better way of remembering a student who suddenly, unexpectedly passed away. And that memory will, will stay there forever and other students will recognize the fact that Louis attended the J.G. Pine School. And it's an excellent, excellent gesture. So any discussion on the motion? Let's take a roll call on that motion.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yays approved.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, reports of the superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. The first one's the donations to Lowell High Athletics Department. The Lowell Youth Soccer Association wishes to donate up to 100 number five practice soccer balls to our high school. In addition, the Hardy family of Lowell would like to contribute a weight, set, rack, and bench. These donations will provide a valuable resource for our student athletes, and we thank both organizations and the family.
It's a great donation. Move approval, Your Honor.
Move approval by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yays approved.
And, Your Honor, would, through you to the superintendent, might we send a letter of thanks to, to the group for the donation?
Yes.
Thank you.
I know that will happen, yes.
Your Honor, the list of eligible teachers reported is in your packet-
Okay.
-as well as the personnel report. Are there any questions on either of those?
Any questions on eligible teachers? Move approval by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor of that report, signified by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That report's been accepted and reported and filed. Personnel report?
Any questions on the personnel report?
Move approval, Your Honor.
Move approval by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All in favor, signified by saying aye. That report has been accepted and placed on file.
And, and, Your Honor, just to ensure that we send a letter of thanks to our retirees, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the request for home education, the following, Dawn Johnson and Alaa Mercyfull from Three River Place Apartment, A-210, respectfully request to homeschool their children under general laws, Chapter 76, Section 1, home education. It's constitutionally permissible, therefore I recommend approval of this request. If granted, the number of families approved by the Lowell School Committee to homeschool will total 33 and the total number of children will be 61.
Move approval by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call. You, you want to say something, Jim?
No.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yays approved.
Madam Superintendent, did you have an announcement to make about a function that's going to happen Saturday, October 3rd?
I do. And in the spirit of physical fitness and promoting physical fitness for our students and our families, there's the American Heart Association Heart Walk at Merrimack Valley, Start Heart Walk, date, sorry, Jan, sorry, Saturday, October the 3rd, the San Bus Pavilion Lowell. It's one to three miles. We hope families can come out and support the American Heart Association for this great walk. Registration's at 8:30 and the walk start time is 10 o'clock.
And I would just like to add that we are so fortunate in this city to have a very wonderful business community, and especially the banking community. And Enterprise Bank has, has taken the lead on, on this effort with Jack Clancy and Judge Duncan. There were many people on the committee, but all the banks we have in the city, they're there all the time, whenever we ask for assistance. And I'd just like to see everyone go out and show your support for this great, great cause. And before we move on to new business, I just have a question to ask, Madam Superintendent.
Yes.
Do all the employees who received a layoff notice, are they entitled to unemployment insurance? And when could they apply?
Yes, Your Honor. If they're not coming back to work for whatever reasons, they are entitled to apply for unemployment insurance benefits. And in fact, that department determines their eligibility. I do know that at this time of year, we have had a few calls saying that for whatever reasons, just because we weren't able to hire people back, that people did receive what we call a letter of insurance, which we have talked about a couple times at the last few meetings. And if they have not been hired back, we, we, we will support them in going to the unemployment office to state that they haven't been hired back and they can call Sue Mulligan's office and ask them to confirm for them that in fact they're not being hired back, that they have been laid off. And that's absolutely no problem for us to communicate with the unemployment office on that point for any employee who's in need of assistance.
Would they need some form of a letter from the administration or the school department? Or could they go down to the unemployment office and say a letter is forthcoming? I just want some clarification.
Right. My understanding, and I'll refer this to Assistant Superintendent Mulligan, but my understanding is the confirmation does come from our, from our school department to say, yes, in fact, that this person has not been rehired. Could you confirm that, Assistant Superintendent Mulligan, please?
Mr. Mayor, that's a great question because I was in conversation with the unemployment, the Vision of Unemployment Office this week. And what they advised me to do in cases such as this is to take the unemployment application and write on it revised and then clarify on the unemployment application that these folks are actually laid off and will not be recalled to work.
Okay. So that, that issue or that problem has been addressed?
And just call us if people have any questions at all about their status.
Any questions to call?
We will provide assistance.
Assistant Superintendent?
Correct.
And hopefully those questions will be answered. Moving on with the agenda. New business, convention, conference requests.
Mayor, if you could, just real quick, can I have a suspension of the rules to talk about a particular topic under new business?
Sure. Move for suspension of the rules by Mr. Leary, seconded by Connie Martin. All in favor of the suspension, signified by saying aye. Any opposed? Suspensions are annull.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to the superintendent. Just, I know that we, in the paper today, there was, Secretary Revel was in town discussing a lot of legislation regarding the public schools. And I know that you and the curriculum Subcommittee Chairman Connie Martin were actually meeting with, with him and his folks, or at least with some of the secretary's folks regarding actually the plan. If you could give us an update in terms of what your discussions were as compared to what his discussions were today and where do you see this going in the future? Thank you.
Sure. Just so that people who haven't read the article today, Paul Revel came to the city yesterday and spoke with the editorial, editorial board at the Lowell Sun with regards to the legislation that's presently being put forward that would basically take over 30 schools within the Commonwealth that were deemed unperforming. The criteria that will be used to determine what those 30 schools will be has not been conveyed to us at this point. We were told as recently as Friday by the Deputy Commissioner- We were told as recently as Friday by the Deputy Commissioner at a meeting, at the Urban Superintendents' Meeting, that they won't necessarily use the No Child Left Behind criteria, that in fact, they are going to look at not only MCAS scores, but also longstanding growth patterns, what schools have remained flat and haven't seen progress. With that said, I do think that it's a pretty reasonable bet to think that's going to be pretty close to what the No Child Left Behind would indicate to us, so that some of our schools perhaps would be in that 30 category, you know, in that category of those 30 schools. What will also be slightly different is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has changed the way it interacts with districts/schools that are classified as underperforming. In the past, the department directly intervened with schools, and now their entry point into the district will be at the district level, making the districts accountable. And I think it's a good philosophical switch in the sense that they are going to hold districts accountable for any underperforming schools, not the school itself. And if you have even one school who, at this point, there will be across the entire state, on a scale of 1 to 5, a 5 being the worst rank that you can receive, meaning you're going to be taken, quote, "taken over," and there's all kinds of language associated with that, but that's basically what it would mean if you were a #5. But we've been told as recently as Friday that there will be no school, and there's no legislation that's being entertained that would contradict this, that would be classified as a 5 school. However, there are these 30 schools that will be classified as a 4. The legislation that's in front of legislatures to look at is, they basically want to give school districts and those schools an opportunity to turn those schools around before they give them to outside vendors. What that involves is everything from basically tying the hands of our union in the sense that our contracts will no longer pertain to these particular schools, so seniority numbers, principals will be able to hire who they want and let go underperforming teachers without following the evaluation tool that's presently embedded in our particular contract. My understanding as well is that policy can be set by these schools somewhat independent of the superintendent and the school committee, and that hasn't really been fleshed out. I don't know to what extent. But finances as well can be determined by these schools. So, there's a lot of unknowns at this time, but basically, those are the bullets that we see that it could have that type of ramification. We knew a year ago that, you know, this is the direction that the department was going in, but to be quite frank, at that point, nobody had any real money to, really, to be quite frank, take over schools and who was going to do the work. But now we have stimulus money, and we have race-to-the-top monies, and so this legislation has attached to it arguably millions and millions of dollars, so that each school that's designated as a category 4 school has the potential to receive an additional $250,000 a year over five years. And obviously, they're just not going to be giving that to any school without a lot of accountability pieces attached to it, because that will be the case, that a plan has to be drawn up. But as you can appreciate, the unions, both the MTA and the AFT in the state are quite concerned about the legislation as it does infringe on the collective bargaining rights of our union members, that rights and contracts that they've fought long and hard for. And again, it is in response to chronically underperforming schools that have a track record of not being able, for a whole host of complicated reasons, to see great gains in their scores and that their scores remain flat. So it is a complex and difficult problem that I appreciate the state is trying to tackle, and there's no easy answers. And when Committee Member Connie Martin and Jean Franco and I went and met with the Commissioner and the Deputy Commissioner last week, part of the reason why we went was the report that was sent to your homes with regards to our district review plan that the state came in and did last spring, and they shared with us their findings and their recommendations. And we did discuss with them that, we were very pleased that there wasn't any recommendations that they made, that in fact, we weren't already, we didn't already have in place, and in fact, were already very well-developed. And to that point, the Deputy Commissioner said that she had great confidence in the direction that Lowell Public Schools was going in and appreciated how we were taking the various initiatives that we were to scale across the system, not just at our quote-unquote "underperformer Commonwealth priority schools." To this end, the Commissioner's coming to visit Lowell on October 23 to see the good work that we're doing here. But this report specifically targeted the schools that Paul Revel talked about in that report today with regards to, we're not saying it's all of those schools, but if any of our schools, which we haven't had confirmed, which we haven't been given the concrete criteria of what a school would be, need to, you know, what the profile of a school would be that was a 4, but if any of our schools, it would be that cohort. And it would be that cohort, because they were the first group of schools that were identified. What that means is they're the schools that have been in a particular status for the longest period of time. So, as Paul Revel and I quoted him today at a principal's meeting states, you know, the state and school districts, not only across the Commonwealth but across the country, we have become quite proficient in identifying what's wrong, but it's really difficult to come up with a formula or a recipe of what we can do to fix it. And so, you know, we're all in this together. You know, Secretary Revel's mission is to improve underperforming schools as it is the Commissioner's, you know, as it is ours. So, we are committed, obviously, to work with the folks. The Department of Ed was here on Monday again for a four-hour meeting, again. School Committee Member Connie Martin as Chair of the Curriculum Subcommittee, and Jean Franco, and many of our principals and district-level staff, as well as union reps, sat at a meeting where we again discussed what our plan was going forward to address the needs of these particular schools that would again be targeted, perhaps by this piece of legislation and what we were going to do. They are going to come and work with us on our data summit teams and be part of the formulation of what those, basically mining that data will look like. So we're very pleased with our present engagement with the department, but it is definitely a different time. Accountability is taken to a whole different level that we haven't seen in the Commonwealth before with these race-to-the-top monies. If this legislation is passed, it will be definitely a different day in public education.
Mr. Leary?
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up, and I think the mechanics legislation spoke for themselves in the paper today. But it was interesting to say that your conversation with Committee Member Martin, with the Deputy Secretary, is that they're coming here to really, they're impressed with what we're doing.
Right.
And they want other districts to do what Lowell is actually doing now. That'd be a fair statement, because we are that far advanced than other schools in the Commonwealth. They're coming here to, really, the Commissioner's coming, the Secretary of Education's coming to Lowell, because what they want is those steps to be replicated in other urban school districts. Is that safe to say or something to that effect?
Madam Superintendent?
You know, as I've made it, as I have publicly stated many, many times, one of the reasons I wanted to come to Lowell was because of all the great work that had been done here in Lowell, and Lowell has a great reputation within, you know, the field of education, at the department level, with colleagues across the state. So, the work that we're presently continuing to do is because of the work that's been done over decades here, and we're just able to take it to the next level. Timing is everything. Even the pressure of having this type of legislation out there really refocuses unions' management on what is the goal? Do we want to get it done together, or do we want an outside vendor to do it? And really, again, it's, as I said to Paul Georges when I first arrived, you know, there's no superintendent in the state who doesn't want all of it to work with their teachers, with the union, et cetera, but timing is everything. So, we either sit down and figure this out, or somebody else is going to come in and help figure it out for us, and it's just a lot less complicated. We have all the answers here in the city of Lowell to get the job done. We just need to come to the table, listen to each other, and move forward together. And I think that, like one of our teachers said after the AFT workshop this summer, four days, our teachers in Lowell, as I've mentioned, 99.9% of them are highly qualified. That's just such an impressive statistic for an urban district to have that many of our teachers to be highly qualified. And our teachers have had the opportunity over many, many years to be, have professional development opportunities in almost everything that you could imagine, from literacy to numeracy to science. And under Carla Brooks Baer's leadership, you know, the whole idea of beginning a teacher academy where we can handpick and have not only our own teachers who are best, exhibit best practices in their classrooms, to teach courses that are relevant to our students and to really basically develop courses that we see our teachers need to have. Today, in a meeting with the union, with Assistant Superintendent Murphy, we talked about the need that our special education teachers have on being trained in certain assessments and on certain classes that we can have to offer. We have a whole academy where we can offer this professional development programming. So that's just one example of many of the work that's been done just to build our professional workforce here, and really, I think it's just all about us tapping that workforce. And that's all, you know, everybody being, rowing in the same direction, everybody being on the same page so that we can deliver on this. And as I mentioned to School Committee Member Larry, what before we, you know, I think it's important, when this, when the whole readiness school concept first came out, one of the objections that I made to the Association of Superintensive Schools for the state was the fact that I didn't really think it was fair that they were going to take our schools away from the school districts and then change the conditions for the outside vendor, so give them more money or give them different conditions to be successful under. So they have, since that first complaint was lodged, they have now changed the legislation to say that we can have a chance first before that happens, which makes a whole lot of sense, and that was confirmed on Friday, that that is, so we will be given a chance to show that we can deliver. And I think what's really exciting for Lowell Public Schools is that we were all set up to basically take it to the next level, have everybody come to the table, and we, you know, again, we had a great kickoff to the school year. Our unions, all of our unions, management, all came together and shared the vision of where we've been and where we're going in the next year, and I think we have buy-in.
So, Mr. Leary?
Thank you. I just, I was going to bring this up too. I'm glad that Mr. Leary did, because you read the article, and it's very confusing. I mean, the quote in the paper says that, you know, as you said, "We've done a good job diagnosing underperformance, but not a good job of prescribing a remedy." Well, when you cut $8 million a year out and you don't have any federal money for reading teachers, I mean, we've been cutting money for the last 10 years. It's not rocket science here. You can't expect these kids to perform at top-notch when they don't fund it. And I understand the restrictions, but, you know, the system is set up in such a way, but when the funds don't come in, whether it's the local, state, or the federal level, it's really unfair to say, hey, you know, you're not doing, you're not getting the job done. As we saw in the spotlight in Excellence earlier, I mean, these kids are doing a great job, and they're learning. They may not hit that AYP number every year, but they're pretty close to it, and it's not fair to say it's a, you know, it's a yes or no answer. I mean, they're getting there. They're not just quite crossing the line, you know, at the prescribed number every year, but these kids are learning. The teachers are working hard, the administration's working hard, the school committees are doing a good job. I mean, we don't sit here for years and just look at this as a, you know, we put our hearts and souls into this, as do the teachers, and we want these kids to do well. I mean, they're the future of our community. So, it just really irks you to read an article like that, and no offense to the writer, but, you know, we do need to have a dialogue. I called Tommy Golden today in Steve Pienge-Takis's office, and, you know, we need to keep a dialogue up and see where this is going and what's happening, because we don't want to lose control of our schools. I mean, we've put too much time and effort into this to have someone come in and say, "We're going to take over," but now we're going to fund these private companies the way they should be funded when they're not giving us the money. So, you know, whatever we need to do to keep the committee informed, we'd like to know what we can do, what we can help you do, because we're going to put up a good fight for this.
Madam Superintendent?
Well, just in response to that, I appreciate the concern, and, you know, that's, in part, the recommendations that the department made, the point that I made to them was, a recommendation by definition is usually something you're not already doing. So, if you have a recommendation that you want to make, something that we should be doing that we're not, we're listening. So if anybody has any good ideas, let us know. And so, there was no forthcoming additional recommendation. So this is the point that we're making, and, you know, it's not like we have all the answers. It's complex work, but the point is, we are open to suggestions, so if anybody has a recommendation that we should be doing, something that we're presently not looking at, we're listening. And there wasn't any response to that particular point. And I think, you know, again, to have the department come, you know, and see the work that we're doing, the process that we're using, and the way we're going to do business in our schools, and the interaction between the schools, the district, and the Department of Elementary Ed, that we all come in together with our various expertise to look at the gaps, to look at the issues that our data tells us needs to be looked at. You know, I think it's hopeful. I think, you know, again, to quote the deputy, they're confident, they have confidence in the direction we're going in, and it's, you know, you know, this is the middle of a long journey, and there's a long way to go. So, you know, but I think right now, if we take the pulse, that we are on the radar, but I think in a good way, and I think that, you know, again, if anybody has any great suggestions, we're listening.
I would just like to interject. Madam Superintendent, I understand the Department of Education was here to praise the Lowell Public Schools and not to chastise, and that's the feedback I received. And that's wonderful, positive news. And do we have a milestone already? Yes, we do. And you must remember as well, we have a population of students. At the Lowell High School, we all recognize, there were 28 students holding the flags of 28 countries that they represent. And the administration, the school committee, it's a large, large job. It's not suburbia, and it's an urban setting, and youngsters, sometimes, English is not their first language, and it's a large nut to crack. But I was impressed with the Department of Education coming into this school district, praising, not chastising, and that's wonderful news. So, any other discussion? Ms. Fattacante?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, having attended the meeting with Commissioner Mitchell, you know, I have to say, I share my colleague's reaction in reading this Secretary Revel's plan. It does seem dramatically out of sync with what our experiences have been, you know, at least my personal experiences in the last few weeks with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I did read this piece with great trepidation. I mean, it seems to me, all the language that had been very carefully crafted about working in concert, about recognizing the situation that urban districts particularly find themselves in, about being able to point to very specific actions that have been taken and policies and procedures that have been put in place here in Lowell that are moving things in the right direction, I mean, certainly that all is not reflected in any way in this, you know, in this piece. And I don't know where that disconnect happens. I don't know if the conversations that are happening in different places are just directed towards different audiences, perhaps. But I think that to, you know, and this is just in general, I mean, the whole concept of taking an underperforming school and us having the audacity to pretend that we don't know what the problems are. We're dealing with a student population where the problems are made manifest every day. It is not shocking that a school is not reaching AYP when over 70% of their students are on free and reduced lunch. That's not a shock. I doubt Secretary Revel is shocked by that. I don't think it's shocking that- I don't think it's shocking that when you take $8 million out of one particular school district, laying off more than 100, well, more than that, 100 teachers in just one year, let alone 10 years of that kind of neglect, I don't think anyone's surprised when it becomes more and more challenging to help our students achieve. I just find it very disingenuous to be having this conversation about how, you know, that, you know, there's this, we can see the problems, but we can't seem to find the solutions. I think we can find the solutions. And I think that we're, you know, we've all recognized difficult economic times, but let's call that for what it is. It's not from lack of creativity, it's not from lack of commitment, and it's not from lack of, of desire to see our students succeed. We're all trying to do more with less. And I think that it's, again, it's just a very disingenuous way to kind of cast this, this concern as, you know, public school districts somehow don't care enough to, to make these changes, or aren't creative enough to come up with them. The fact of the matter is, is that we are living on a shoestring. We are desperately trying to keep our kids heads above water. That doesn't only include their education, it includes, in many cases, quite literally, keeping their heads above water, keeping them fed, keeping them in heated homes, keeping their families together. So these are huge challenges that these, you know, 40 districts say, or 40 schools, are facing each and every day. And I just think it's unconscionable for us to be able to, for us to be in a situation where educational leadership is pointing at this situation and saying somehow it comes from a lack of imagination to find good solutions, when we all know what the real problems are. And I think dancing around it just does a grave disservice to the students and the communities we serve. Great article. Thanks.
Before we move on with the agenda, I still want to interject. Madam Superintendent, it was a positive meeting, and we did receive praise for the great work that we're doing here.
That's correct.
I want to stress that.
Yes.
Okay, moving on with the agenda. Convention conference request, why don't the Madam Superintendent read them on Article Six? That request has been amended, and we'll get to that.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to remove Article Six from the conference request.
Yes.
Deal with it separately, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, if you...
Shall I read the first five?
I'm going to make...
Do the first five.
Motion to approve the first five, Your Honor?
Motion to approve the first five by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Now, Number Six, does everyone have this copy?
Yes, Your Honor.
The amendment, and the, I'll read the amendment. It's from Jackie Dougherty. To committee colleagues, I am requesting permission to attend the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Mass Joint Conference on November 18th through the 21st, 2009, in Hyannis, Massachusetts. As a participating Massachusetts Association of School Committee Board Member, all conference, travel, and hotel expenses will be paid by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. There is no cost to Lowell School Department. Any discussion on that, Ms. Tony? And move approval by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor?
That's the roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Ms. Dougherty?
Present.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Six yeas, one present, approved.
May I just ask a question for my own curiosity? Why did you have to get our permission for you to go to Hyannis for, for an organization that you belong to?
I, I do not understand why this has happened. The school committee, as members of this elected body, we should be participating in conferences. And why I need to give my colleague permission, I don't understand.
Yeah, I mean...
I, I think it's ridiculous. But Ms. Dougherty wanted it that way, so that's the way, that's why we did it that way. But in my, in my opinion, when my colleagues go to a conference, it is to exercise their ability to become better school committee members, which Ms. Dougherty...
I applaud Ms. Dougherty for traveling to Hyannis and being a part of this, but this is something that you personally chose to get involved in.
We'll talk to him.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, Your Honor, just in response to that question, the vote to be a delegate hasn't come up yet. That'll come up at the next meeting, because apparently the superintendent's secretary didn't have the paperwork yet in from the association. But as happens every year, I go and represent the Lowell School Committee at the association. I mean, I have been going the last few years.
All right.
And I would be a voting member in the delegation. As my colleagues may recall, last year, we actually had a resolution from the Lowell School Committee that was passed at the Delegate Assembly and is now currently a bill in the, at the State House. I don't remember the number of it, but I'll, I'll have more, an update on that. But it is going to be heard before the Joint Commission on Education in October 20th. And that bill, if it passes, could save us a substantial amount of money, a quarter of a million dollars, I think, was the number we talked about last year. So I will be going as a representative of this body. That was why I felt it was important that I had the support of my colleagues. And we will be taking a formal vote at our next meeting, that I will be a delegate at that conference as well. Thank you.
I just, I just had to ask that question, because, okay. Moving on with the agenda, under Communications?
Yes, Your Honor. There's a request for a liquor license for October the 9th from 6:00 PM at the Lowell High School cafeteria for the class of the 1959 reunion.
Move for approval.
Roll call, Your Honor?
Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Present.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Six yeas, one present, approved.
I'm requesting a suspension of the rules to bring up an issue. Subwool by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor of the suspension, signify by saying, "I oppose the suspensions of honor." I received a communication today that the distinguished alumni that they have every year at Lowell High School, and I have attended every one of them, and they're so inspiring. The night of this Distinguished Alumni Awards is October 21st, is the same night as a school committee meeting. And they're asking, could we either delay the meeting or move the meeting? Because if we're not there, it wouldn't make, you know, it wouldn't look good. And, and the reason that they had to chose, the reason they had to choose October 21st, Gil Campbell is one of the recipients. Also, the Allen family is going to be coming in to this city, they're flying in, representing Mr. Allen, a distinguished alumni. He was the governor of Puerto Rico. The Allen House of UMass Lowell is named after him. And I'm bringing this request forward either to move a meeting, delay this meeting, or cancel a meeting, because I think it wouldn't look right if we, the school committee wasn't present at this Distinguished Alumni Awards.
Your Honor, please, suggestion of move the meeting?
Move the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Only because, as you can see tonight, we, we're in the beginning of our school year.
We have so much going on that, I know we all want to participate in the Alumni Night, but I also think we need to have a school committee meeting. So if we might want to maybe move it to the last Wednesday in October?
Wednesday in October.
Your Honor, that would be perfect.
Motion to move the school committee meeting to October 28th, on a Wednesday, the last Wednesday in October, so moved by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Will we take a roll call?
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Just to reminisce a little bit, like I indicated, I, I've attended all of these Distinguished Alumni Nights and Awards. I did not know that Billy Sullivan, the founder of the Boston Patriots, the founder of the American Football League, was so instrumental in forming the Jimmy Fund. And there's so many great stories that you could listen to from some of these great alumni that it's mind-boggling, it really is. And Dr. Leahy, and there was an author. It's just intriguing to go there, listen to these great stories that come out of this great city and Lowell High School, the 25th-best high school in the state. Okay, moving on with the agenda, People to People Sports Ambassador Programs, John Leahy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to Superintendent, I just want to bring this to our attention. Every now and again, our students get nominated for these person-to-person ambassador programs, whether it's sports or academics.
Yes.
Can we just, I don't know if we need a change in policy or just information. A few parents have approached me and just want to make sure that it's legitimate. You know, you're getting, you're getting this letter in the mail, and it's about your son or daughter, and they're usually middle school. So, you know, you're concerned to make sure it's a legit thing.
Sure.
So I don't know, has it ever been policy that the school or the teachers should make a list and just say, you know, "This school year, I'm recommending these kids to this program." I just think it would be a courtesy. I don't even know when it happens or how it happens, but it might be just a courtesy to say, you know, "Teacher from the Sullivan School is going to recommend 12 students. Let's just send a letter to the home and say, 'Your son or daughter has been chosen by Teacher X to participate in People to People Ambassador Programs. You'll be receiving information.'" So that's all this is. I never thought about much, but a few people have asked me, so it's a legitimate concern. Thank you.
Connie?
Thank you. If I could, my understanding is that the, the process doesn't work, though, from the school making nominations. I mean, my, my sense is, and maybe, I don't know the specific one or any, you know, any of the specific ones, but my sense with these is, I mean, these are just mailing lists that are generated, and they just send them out to 5,000 kids, and some kids, you know, are interested and want to raise the money to participate. My sense is that it's not a school nomination process, it's more of a...
That was my understanding. I didn't know if you were talking about something different than that, but I'm only familiar...
Well, if that's what it is, then maybe...
I'm only familiar with what Ms. Martin just said. But if this is, this might be something different. I don't know what's in that envelope.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I've gotten a couple, but not for me. But maybe, maybe we could just send it out when your child reaches middle school. Maybe we just send them a, maybe it's, however we communicate it to the parent, to just say, "Your, your child may be selected through this program," which is, you know, we, we don't know how they get selected, but whatever. You have every right to check it out. I mean, so, I don't know.
Before we adjourn, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Lowell High School, the junior ROTC cadets, Chief Master Sergeant Robert Jakes, and the entire faculty, Bill Samaras, and everyone who attended, a very emotional memorial to 9/11 at Lowell High School. And I'm so, so proud just to be a part of this organization and just to be present. It was a moment of silence, and this, this city never, ever forgets. And I know there were many memorials throughout the country, but this one is close to my heart, and there was sincerity, and I believe his name was Lieutenant General Ruggles, correct me?
That's correct, Your Honor.
From Hanscom Air Force Base, and his speech was remarkable. But those kids and their junior ROTC program, I'm proud of them. Madam Superintendent?
I was just going to say, he was a three-star general, Your Honor, and it was very impressive that he came to honor not only our color guard, but our students at Lowell High. There's only 24 in the country of that rank. So it was very impressive that he was able to spend some time with us on a very sober and somber morning.
And it was done with so much class and respect, and it was flawless, flawless. And you, when you, when I walked out, I was so proud just to be a part of it. With that said, I'll entertain, yes, Mr. Leahy?
I just wanted to add that every year, it's spectacular. But all the speeches, yourself and the superintendent, very good this year. I know you always give a heartfelt speech, and it was very good this year, as usual. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Madam Superintendent?
And I think, Your Honor, it'd be a mess on our part if we didn't also acknowledge all of the students and the folks at the restaurant that have...
Oh, yes, most definitely.
They did a wonderful job.
Yes, yes.
Catering to our guests.
The hospitality at the restaurant was excellent. Those kids worked very hard and bent over backwards to make sure we were welcomed, and they treated us like we were at the hotel salon. So it's, it's just wonderful, just wonderful. And with that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Conway. Thank you.